It is 6:30. We will call the October 3rd Planning Commission meeting to order. First order of business is Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on the agenda, role of the Planning Commission. I am not going to read that tonight. Item four, approval of agenda. Any corrections or changes to the agenda?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item of business, consent agenda. We have the Planning Commission minutes from September 5th. Any corrections or comments?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item, item six, open forum. Public comments limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. Anyone here for open forum? All right. I'm assuming no one online?
One person online. If you want to raise your hand.
For open forum? All right. We will move on. Council update.
Okay, so for September 10th, we had, for Danielle Lapp, she had set up this Adopt a Park. Actually, I'm not sure who set up. I thought it was her. Anyways, groups and their individuals can now adopt a park and periodically make sure that it stays clean. There was the cannabis zoning ordinance. Most of that went, I think the way, the same way you guys had kind of set it up. It was, for the most part, going to be treated as off-sale liquor and there were some other minor issues, but that went through. We had a code enforcement issue that looked like it was boiling up to go to court and the two sides got together and kind of hammered out differences and that was approved by the council. What those were. 2025 budget was approved. Well, initially it was rejected. And then there was a very quick discussion and one of the people that voted against it then changed this vote. But, you know, there's a lot of details in that if you're, you have questions about. So it eventually passed three to two. So if you're concerned about what, what was in there, why was it voted for or against, you might want to get ahold of the individual council members. And that was for the 10th. The 24th, we were asked to put together, so the Matt Council is making some changes. I think it's on your agenda for tonight. The Matt Council's making some changes and they have a comment period. And so we kind of gave staff some of our thoughts on what those comments should be. DCM Farms' concept plan. I think a lot of those issues were similar to what you guys had brought up. I think there was a few of us concerned about the density, the number of small lots. It was, oh, it was also established that the whole commercial area will be another plat. It'll kind of be treated as, and I think you had known that too, it's kind of, kind of be treated as a, as an outlot for the purposes of this one. Then we had an item for a national fitness campaign. Apparently it's a, a thing where you build a fitness court in one of the parks. But it looked like the budget hit was going to be somewhere around 200 grand if we weren't going to get enough grants. And so we basically put it back in staff's hands to see what grants were really available. Because I think a lot of us felt that we could spend 200K better elsewhere in the parks. There was the zoning change request on, um, Am Creek Park, around that small property out there that was approved from Ag to R, R1. Neighborhood, Parkway Neighborhood, where those apartments are, there was an EAW that they went through and the EAW had determined there was no EIS, environmental impact statement needed. So this was to affirm that, that passed five to zero. And then there was approval for the parks to go out for bids to get irrigation into some of our bigger parks. A few of them are going to need wells. But it was to go out for bid on all the equipment needed. And that passed five to zero. And that is it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, moving right along. Item eight, public hearing. Approval of comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and preliminary plat for Diamond Creek addition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it is, you described, there's three applications with this project and I'll kind of briefly explain each, introduce each one and then go into a little bit more detail. First of all, the project is located off of Diamond, I'm sorry, Dayton Parkway and Brockton. So this is Dayton Parkway. Interstate 94 will be over here and then Brockton over here. So it's both the, I'll refer to this as the north half and the south half. The applications are for comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and then a preliminary plat. One thing that's unique about this project is the preliminary plat is for all outlots. The developer does not know what the eventual use is going to be, so the intent is to build the streets now and then market the outlots for development by others. And so this area is guided for general mixed use, meaning it, it could be a mixture of whether it's multifamily, commercial, retail, or I'm going to say light industrial. And what I mean, very, very light. You know, describe that in a little bit. With the comprehensive plan amendment, the amendment is specific to amend the sewer staging plan. Dayton is intended to grow both south to north and east to west. We have, this is kind of our growth plan of when sewer could be extended to any property in which decade. For this project or this area, it's guided as 2020. And the intent is to amend this map so that it is in the current stage. So it's a real, relatively minor amendment, but it's a process that we need to go through.
Is the intent, John, the whole area south of 94 that we're amending, or is it just these parcels?
Right now, it's just these parcels. I guess my preference would be to do the whole triangle.
Makes sense.
I've got to advertise for that. So I'll, I'll come back again. Specific to the zoning map amendment, again, the property, the properties are zoned A1 agricultural. The intent is to rezone it to GMU5 or general mixed use southwest. Listed on the screen is, is an example of what the permitted uses, which include multifamily with a minimum of 12 units per acre as well as offices, schools, hotel, retail, and manufacturing that had, manufacturing and warehousing, but it's limited to 50% of, of a building that can be warehoused. So once again, this isn't intended for a distribution center, but rather a manufacturing use where, that has some warehousing. One of the challenges with this property, I'm starting to dig in on the preliminary plat, is the amount of wetlands and floodplain. So we have several outlots. A number of them are actually wetland. So again, the intent is to market the dry outlots for developments in the future. When, I should say, an outlot is not buildable as it is, so this would require a future developer to come back in and replat the outlot as, as a buildable lot, at which time we would look at any easements that are required, whether it's for stormwater ponding or sidewalks, trails, and as well as landscaping requirements and other design standards. Okay, critical issues with this. Three that I want to draw attention to. The first one is the extension of the right-of-way from Dayton Parkway to the north property line. The property that's adjacent to the north is landlocked. There's somewhat of a question if the county would allow an access off of the roundabout. In previous conversations with the county, the answer has been no. But there, I don't know if that's been changed. So that's confirmation that it's still needed from Hennepin County. The second item is the width of the right-of-way on the south part. Staff's recommendation is to require 80 feet of right-of-way that's right-of-way width, whereas 50 feet is proposed. And the third item is we need further review for the grading and stormwater plans. Just forgot I had this slide.
Can I, can I jump in quick? Our packet did have a couple other critical issues. Have those since been resolved, specifically moving the trail from the east side to the west side?
I, I'm going to say they're resolvable. So moving the trail is...
Well, they are. Yeah, okay.
This drawing on the right is the Parkway Neighborhood. So the intent is three rivers. Park District will build a trail, or will have a trail that will run along the west side of this road and then through this project as well. On the preliminary plat, the trail is on the east side. It's, should be a minor change to move it to the west.
Agreed. Thank you.
General questions? We have the developer here also.
You mentioned the right-of-way width that staff recommended 80 and they have 50, and then council also something about 60?
Yes.
Did, is staff still recommending 80?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So there's no expectations that, you know, whether it's the council or the commissioner, always going to follow staff's recommendation, but we still have an obligation to, to make recommendations.
That it?
That's it. That's...
Pretty short and sweet.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Nice to be with you. My name is Ken Spreeder. I represent the Chaney Group. This is Vicki Van Dell from WSB Engineering. Just go over a few of these things. Start out with the preliminary plat, or the issue regarding the street, the road to the north. So we have talked to that landowner and they have assured us that they aren't landlocked, that they've talked to the county, they can get off the roundabout and they're fine. We have sent a letter, not, not from me and not from Vicki. We had the attorney for the client send a letter to the city saying, before we develop any, any buildings there, before we get those outlots turned into lots, we will have worked out the transportation to the satisfaction of the neighbor to the north. And that's of record. You got the letter? Council has the letter? We delivered it. We handed it...
Yeah, I remember. I do now have, have a copy. This is from your attorney.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't have a copy of it, but I remember you passed by.
Well, I handed them out at the council meeting to everybody. So we don't understand, we don't want to plat it now because we don't know where the road's going to go. So we met with the council and the council said, that's fine, put the cul-de-sac, just a little cul-de-sac. I got to get a road over to that, our lot there, so that I can sell the land. People can do soil borings, people can do, we can look at grading, we can do environmental testing. But they got to get there. But right now, we're kind of water locked. And, and to some extent, we're landlocked if the neighbor to the north wasn't such a nice guy and let us go in that way once in a while. So it, it's very reasonable. We've committed that we're not going to build anything there other than the cul-de-sac until we have a user and we're going to then work it out. But it's likely that we really don't need a full road there because we have had, for example, apartment builders who would look forward to combining the two lots and then they would have their own internal system. But, you know, I understand your role is to kind of play the what-if game, you know, what if the two lots don't get so, what if? Well, we got a letter into you saying, we're just here to build roads. For the last three years, all I've wanted to do is build some roads so we can sell some land off your brand-new bridge. And this has been a big hang-up. We thought it was resolved. It's, it's coming back up here tonight. And I'm prepared to answer any questions about it, but I got to be candid with you and say there is no reason to plat it tonight when nobody knows where it's going to go.
If you don't mind, can you...
Go ahead, yeah.
I'll just add to that a little bit.
Vicki's here to keep me honest.
So last September, we did have a council meeting. It was a very big concern of ours to have this road being platted all the way to the north property line because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know where the road is going to want to go. What if it goes to the right? What if somebody proposes something on the west side? So that was very important to us. That's why we took it to the council last September to talk about this. And the council at that time had said they did not think we needed to put the right-of-way all the way to the north property line. So we were happy moving forward. And then we met with staff again and we talked to them and we said, how can we make all of us happy about this? So at that time, it was our recollection that staff had recommended preliminary plating that right-of-way, but not final plating it at that time until that outlot is developed. Because that outlot cannot be currently developed in its current state. It can't be developed that way. So it has to come back.
So the issue tonight is, we have a preliminary plat that's going to show one thing. We're going to have a final plat that shows something else. And now the question has come up, is that such a great idea? So our idea is to show on neither one, because either, either way, we have nothing but outlots. We can't do anything on those lots without coming back to you and coming back to the council. So it isn't like we're pulling something to our side of the table and you're on the short end of the stick. You've got control.
What's the mechanism for the city, if there's not a preliminary plat or that road's platted, to someday make sure that that road gets in there, be it when that, that outlot's developed? Does that hurt opportunity?
Yes, but, so our concern is that outlot may not develop, or may not develop for many, many years. It might, the triangle piece of property might develop first, or want to develop first, in which case, if it's landlocked, it has no access to the street, it has no access to sewer and water. So, you know, Ken's project would, would hold that triangle piece hostage until a right-of-way is, is brought in.
And so in theory, if we platted the road and they want to develop their parcel, they'd have to probably pay for the entire road anyway, which is probably not going to happen, meaning it'll hurt their feasibility analysis.
It could.
Okay.
Well, let me add to that. I hate talking about this stuff because it comes off like I'm saying bad things. I'm not trying to say bad things. Put it in this perspective. If we don't develop the north side at all, you got no sewer and water, you got no road. So, so it's, the road has become an issue, but it, but it's a red herring. It's an aggravation, not, not a real problem. Because I got to get sewer and water to my own land. I got, you're not going to let me hook up to the sewer and water without the development. I, I just can go on and on about this. This is after years of working with the Army Corps to let me cross that water.
So... Did it ever occur that maybe crossing it now with permissions is the right answer in case they changed their mind?
But we're planning to cross it with this project.
Wait till recording this. These sessions are recorded. We're not on TV, but we're recorded. No, you know, we're just not that kind of folks, you know what I mean? We're, we understand how the game is played. But, but we're not playing fair. And now we're in a pickle because we were told to do it this way, with the preliminary plat showing one thing and the final plat. Now somebody's saying that's not such a good idea. I don't care. I'll do one or the other, but tell us what to do. But I don't want to show that road on the final plat.
Or the prelim plat.
I personally don't think that was a good idea to begin with, but, you know, I'm trying to work it up.
It's currently on the preliminary plat.
What's that?
It's currently on the preliminary plat.
Yeah, and we'll take it up. Or you can tell us to take it up.
So if you want to market this piece of land, this multifamily piece of land, and eventually develop it, that's your intention, right? If you find a user to do it. And, and I believe you in, in saying that, why not cross the wetland now? Because it's, it's not much further. It's not really going to dictate the alignment of your roadway yet. I think, because that's my fear. My fear is the wetland's going to be the major impediment to actually getting over there. And this piece of land may never develop. You know, stopping short of the wetland, I, I get staff's concern in, in that piece is landlocked. But then it doesn't establish the full alignment through the property.
Right. And they don't know where they want us to connect it at this point, the guys to the north. We've talked about it.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing is...
Well, you wouldn't though. You barely, you, I mean, we're only talking, getting a little bit further than what you're showing it now. Have the cul-de-sac on the other side of the wetland boundary.
And, you know, because we don't know what we're going to do, we don't even know from our perspective. Do we want it in the center of our lot so we can develop on both sides? Do we want it way to the one side so that it's out of the way, so to speak? You know...
I mean, you're, you're already establishing the direction with the curve of the road, right? You're already establishing a horizontal curve, but by the time you get to that cul-de-sac, you're, you're already showing where it's going at least to jump the wetland. That, that's what I'm arguing for is, is at least jump on the wetland. And, and all that's going to do is make your piece of land more marketable in the future too, right? That's kind of where my head is at on that one. It, it doesn't lock you into an alignment through the entire, you know, piece of that multifamily. Because, you know, in reality, the way you're already having it bend, you're probably going to cross the wetland right there anyways. It's the narrowest part of the wetland.
And if I'm not mistaken, and here's why Vicki's here. We got to have somebody who separates it. Correct me if I'm wrong. We really didn't have much decision-making in that because we tried to cross at one of the narrowest spots, number one. And then the curvature of the road was kind of mandated by how that, that curb cut on...
Yeah, where the curb cut is at Dayton Parkway and then the curvature to come in and through, it had to cross at that point. But the question is, you're right, could it turn west? Could it turn or go straight or continue?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to can...
The wetland, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would cross the wetland right here. It's like I said, what I'd be advocating for is getting, getting that temporary cul-de-sac on the other side of the wetland.
And that's the, that's the plan, and our current plan.
Oh, I guess I'm not seeing that in the drawings.
Further down.
Is it? Okay, maybe I'm just looking at the wrong sheet.
Page 54.
Yeah, because our goal is to make sure...
Okay, so 20, oh, okay, that was the concept. My apologies.
That's okay. Our goal was to make sure we got all the wetland stuff at the same time, because you guys know how difficult that can be.
Oh, yeah, then that's the page I was hoping to be on too.
The question is, is the Planning Commission okay with it being on the preliminary plat? I know you don't deal with the final plat, I guess, in the approval process, but, but, or should we just leave it off now that you know what we're doing?
So you're saying the, the cul-de-sac is not part of the final plat?
Cul-de-sac will be far, part of the final plat, not...
There's a temporary cul-de-sac. It's not platted as a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
But it's going across the wetland and then there'll be a temporary cul-de-sac there.
Let me, let me think back to another project, Sundance Woods, when it was put in. That road, Rush Creek Parkway, was temporary for, I don't know, five years, six years? And then they came through and platted it. I mean, that's the same situation we're dealing with here, is it not? To some extent?
Similar. You're talking about Fernbrook, is it?
Off of Fernbrook to what, what is now Sundance Greens, to the wood line, more or less.
Yeah, I don't hold the agreement. That was in place before my involvement, but yeah, the road existed.
So, so we have, we have some precedence of something similar happening, where a temporary road was put in for use by residents of Sundance Woods to get... Here, it's a little different because it's all your parcel, but you don't know how it's going to, at least in what's shown. You don't know how that outlot's going to develop. I don't see an issue with it.
The issue is striking the preliminary plat from it, the road from the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm kind of with Peter in the sense that it's just, it is just that it's a preliminary plat and it's a commercial lot. So it's like, maybe in a residential neighborhood, the preliminary plats are way more important because you're laying out tons of lots and if all of a sudden you change the road, it can impact density. This is a commercial lot. I don't, I don't know if I see the importance of it.
Deflectibility might be very helpful, but not only for our side of that line, for the guy on the north as well, especially if we combine the two. This could be a big, big economic thing, but a, but a developmental thing. It also brings in a little bit bigger parcel of property should something fall out of the sky commercially that would decide it wanted to be there, retail-wise. Okay, let me go on my next one. The, the only, Vicki's better to talk about this than me, but the only thing on the 50-foot wide road is, that's your code.
And I'll kind of just jump right in because it's hard to explain.
No, no, this is where we need it.
Yeah, the marginal versus road, which we originally had this as a private drive on that south side. So we have Dayton Parkway and we have the roads coming south. And we were going to just do a private drive heading to the west to get across that other little drainage ditch to get to that other parcel. So we had a private drive shown. And so then it wanted to be public, so that had come up last year. We had talked about it. And it had been recommended to go to 60. And then we had looked at the code and said, well, this is really only a marginal road. Like this is a 50-foot right-of-way by code. So we were, went with that, saying, like, you know, because every foot that we don't put in right-of-way gets to be sold and taxed. So it just seemed like it was unnecessary in our mind. So we made it a 50-foot road. So it sounds like they want to have a 36-foot face-to-face road and we're hoping we can do that in the 50 feet. So that is our goal. That is our, the thing we wanted to bring up.
That's right. And, and I guess the only other comment I would say you, you touched on. When, when you look at the impediments we have, we're, we're kind of scrambling with development costs. Not your problem, I understand, but development costs, you know, having some inventory left by the time we give stuff away. Now, I don't view the road as a giveaway. We need the roads to get to the people. But, but we're trying to, trying to condense that as much as we can. Now, I did say, because I didn't understand, I didn't realize the code was 50. I'm not sure any of us realized the code was only 50 feet at the time. I did say to the council, if you want 60 feet, I'll go 60 feet. And I'm that guy.
Instead of that, yeah.
If you want the 60 feet, I said we'd give you 60 feet, even though I shouldn't have said it. I'm there. But it is an unfair that we're reminding you that your code only requires us to do 50. And I don't understand 80 at all.
So the north, on the north half, that's an 80-foot right-of-way?
And that to us was dictated by city because those are city roads. And this was a separate private drive going to a separate lot that does not have a through at all. So this was city dictated what that needed to be. That was 80 feet. These are city roads. This was a private drive that became public that we're like...
Here's another thing. You start doing a couple retailers on those two immediate lots. We need a lot of room on those streets for turn lanes and this and that. That, that's a whole different... You got your, your trails there yet, right? Trails there?
Potentially, yeah.
You got a lot of stuff going on up there. And you got a lot of traffic in a very condensed area, which I can't control because we hit the water. So 80 feet made a lot of sense to me there.
Yep. Coming into the intersection, the only intersection that houses all that stuff going to the south and to the east, to the north triangle, so it was, it made sense.
And especially if we put residential on our parcel or the parcel goes residential to the north, even if we don't do residential on ours, you know, you got a lot of action in a fairly concise area. Here, we would have a, a project at the end of the road, so to speak. Not the same situation.
So I'll raise, there's also the issue of should this be a public street or a private street?
Well, we've agreed to make it public.
I think it kind of depends on the use a little bit too. And we don't know that yet.
I don't know what that is.
If you're wondering what some of us are waiting for, we're waiting for the two engineers to chime in.
I, I, if, if that's what you're looking for, I think 60 feet is probably the best for that road. We don't know what the outlot will be. It does provide room for potentially turn lanes if you would need it, depending on the use inside the cul-de-sac and then further to the south. There's not a ton of stacking room between that. We'll call it the, what's labeled now as the south private street. And by the time you get to that signal. So that, that will be my feeling from an engineering standpoint. 60 feet seems appropriate through there, given the discussion that has already been had with city council. You know, you get 80 feet of right-of-way, you can put a lot of stuff in there. I totally get that. And we don't know what's on the outlot half, but I think city council has provided their direction as well that, you know, 60-foot is something that they were, would be agreeable to. And I, and I think you can make that work for a street that will, it'd be a cul-de-sac, right? It's not going to go anywhere.
I, I, I will live up to my big mouth.
Are we, well, are we envisioning on this private, well, this, this street that we're talking about, is there trails or sidewalks on it?
It looked like a sidewalk was called out.
I mean, then I'd lean towards, you know, 50 feet, but, or 60 feet.
60, right. Five-foot walk, five-foot mark.
Yeah.
The reason that 50 comes in is I can sell land to somebody and tell them they got to put a trail on.
Yep.
Okay, and it's in there 10-foot drainage utility that most cities have. And on these areas, we might want to have a little bit bigger greenery there, because it's hard to make a, I got two engineers here. It's hard to make, it's hard to make that turn to come in and make a parking stall with only 10 feet. If you get out 20 feet, now you can get the guy in a lane and, and a park. So that 20 feet's going to be gone. So the question is, do I give it to you in a street, or do I sell it on behalf of my client? That's, that's what it's all about. Because at the end of the day, you want the trail. You gotta have, you might have some drainage utilities that don't fit in that street area. They could go in my 10, 20 feet. That, that's why I think 50 isn't totally unfair. But again, I said I'd go 60.
Jason, does the city allow utilities underneath trails, or do we require those to be off the pavement area?
Preferably the trail would be in the right-of-way, the utilities would be behind it. We do have situations where they do run under the trails.
Dual trench, or dual joint trench?
They're typically joint trench in what we do.
Both sides?
That's a good question. We have it in our class a lot.
Okay. Because that occupies, you know, I mean, there's, it gets pretty tight at 50.
There probably wouldn't be anything on the south of this, just because it's not developed on that side.
Yeah, yeah. You would probably only need it on one.
There was discussions of a trail on one side, sidewalk on the other. Emergency services wanted a bypass lane, if you will, in case of a stall or otherwise stranded or a vehicle on the side. So that was the reason for a 36 minimum. And then with a trail and a sidewalk, that was the preference for a wider, yeah, right-of-way.
Trail and sidewalk is kind of, plus the bypass lane is what helped get you guys to that 80 recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, that's our, our typical for a commercial, just to fit all that stuff in there.
I mean, another way to, to look at it, I may be crossing comments here that I was reading, but, you know, to your point, Ken, is maybe put it in an easement.
Just to note, not that it couldn't be amended or an overlay, but DNU easement does not support trail use as their standard. There can be an overlying easement to allow trail use, but just to note, it can't just automatically go within that area.
Should I go on to the next item? This is a quick one. The, this is kind of a new item to us. They would like a, a temporary easement to go at the end of what we're currently calling a private drive, which is really a city street, for fire safety. This is brand-new to us. As a matter of fact, this is, this is, there's been a lot of aggravation on my part here. This is one of the bigger ones, because I begged for that. And then everybody said, no, you can't do it. We can't do it. We can't do it. So now I'm being mandated to do it. So I talked to John today, and I think we've resolved this. Now, I don't want to speak for you.
Oh, you are, but yeah. It's, it's workable.
It's workable. And, and just so everybody knows, and if I misspeak, you'll, you'll get in. You know, it, it should be the first person who develops in that area that does it. I don't know why it's my responsibility, because somebody else is building 640 units for me, for me to provide fire access for them. But I'm not against being cooperative. We'll give you a temporary easement for the thing. We just don't want to build and pay for that stretch of road. We're building and paying for a lot of stretches of road. So I, I don't think that's unreasonable. But the idea that it came up aggravated me to no end because I wanted it, and then nobody wanted to give it to me, and now it's a mandated thing. But where we are right now is this. We'll, we'll grant the easement. We'll show it on the preliminary plat. We'll show it on the final plat. But what we want to do is, we don't want to be responsible for it because not ours.
And I think we talked about with John, tell me if I'm wrong, but that whoever builds first, if that does happen to be us that needs it for fire access, build a building, you know, all of a sudden you need fire access to get here for these parcels on this property, then we would be the one to have to put it in.
I don't want anybody to think that our roads are building.
Yeah, we're just, this is a road project.
So if I could provide a little bit of context. So the property to the east is the Parkway neighborhood. There's 650 units that are being proposed here. And whatever gets built here is, is built here, but all of this is coming out on one access point. If this intersection or, or entrance is blocked for whatever reason, nobody's getting out. There is an existing farm road that goes along the south property line. We've discussed this in depth, if this can be used as the emergency access road. The problem, there's two problems with this. One is that it's in the flood plain. It, if there's a flood, it doesn't work as an access point. Two is that there's a weight restriction on the culvert that crosses the creek here. So the solution that, that staff is, is requiring is that there'd be a temporary emergency access road that goes from this cul-de-sac to Brockton. And the reason why I'm saying it's temporary, because we don't know what's going to, how this outlot is going to get laid out. The intent is that there will be a permanent easement for emergency access. We don't know where that's going to be. It'll be figured out once this outlot is developed. And so with, as part of the development agreement, Ken will dedicate an easement for the right-of-way, or for the easement for the emergency access. And the intent is whoever builds first would actually build the emergency access.
So, so to clarify, Ken's not responsible for building the road, just providing space for it?
Unless he builds first.
Unless he builds first.
What sort of road is this? To put it in perspective, is it paved?
It, it's paved. So, I mean, it'd be up to the fire chief. So generally speaking, I think we would like 20 feet.
Yeah, I think it'd be up to the fire marshal to determine. They have been accommodated, accommodating to lesser than a 20-foot. But they do want it to support an engine, so it'd be a pretty robust section.
Yeah.
Fairly heavy construction.
Fire lanes are 20 feet wide. That allows, whether it's fire engine or ladder, whatever, to set out rigors. So the truck itself might only be eight or nine feet wide, but it takes 20 feet to set up. Within the temporary easement, there's, they're not going to set up. So they just need to get from point A to point B.
And then just to recap, Ken, you're okay with the easement, and as long as whoever goes first builds the road?
Yeah.
And that's kind of what staff is saying too?
Right. And I think it's key that it's temporary, because as he said, we, we don't know exactly how we're going to develop. So you've got to have a little wiggle room for, for everybody to work, but yeah.
I think the intent of this one is a 16-foot easement, probably a 12- or a 14-foot paved road through there, if needed. If this site were to develop, we would just work with the development layout to create a permanent access through here. If it's an apartment building, it would just be a happier section of the parking lot, for example, to the right-of-way.
John, John getting some credit. He had the best line. He says, Ken, why do you get upset when you were right? That's a great line, John. We, we love that line. That was good. I, I enjoy that.
I haven't studied the plans enough, but does it, I mean, I'm looking at it. It seems like the grades are less. It's a shorter distance to go back up to Dayton Parkway and not crossing wetland. If it's temporary, just thinking from a cost-saving stance point?
If a road could be selected, we could look at that.
So just, you know.
It's too, and the, the intent was to have a second access. That does not rely on the intersection of Dayton Parkway, because that's where an accident or other blockage might occur.
He was just saying he'd rather have it separate to a different road in case.
I'm just giving you guys, both you guys and, and the other property more flexibility in whatever's cheaper. Seems to make sense to look at, at least.
Unfortunately, the secondary out is so close to the mission, the primary. There's not much separation for safety purposes. You could still have a crash that blocks both.
And I think we have a six or seven-foot grade change right at the road edge there too. So I appreciate where you're going. And I think having it a part of the development as we move forward, like Jason just said, I think would be very helpful. If it's just a beefed-up section in that drive aisle, I think that's acceptable to all of us.
Next item was the trail. The only comment is, I wish we'd have learned that earlier so we didn't have to spend the time and money to switch it. But where the good news is, we've analyzed it, and we can do it without having to go back to the Army Corps.
That was our main concern. What if it's more wetland fill, or what if there's some concern about that?
And I don't dislike those people, but that's a career move. I've had marriages that haven't lasted as long as I tried to get those water crossings. Okay, and then the last one is, I want to be very articulate about this, and this is again, we're, this is Van Del helping out. So I'm going to get, I want to give, I'm willing to give, I'm all on board with giving drainage utility easements over those outlots where we have wetland. Now, there's a lot of reasons for that. One of them, I don't care. And the other one is, if I don't do it, the Army Corps approval goes away. So, so guess what? We're going to do that. What I don't want to do is give drainage utility easements now, when you don't need them, because we're not doing anything, over all of our land. Now, that didn't come from me. That came from the Sheeney Group's attorney. We're not going to do it. And you don't need it. And the only way I can develop anything is when I come back in, I got to show my storm ponds. I got to show I'm controlling all that water. You don't need a drainage utility easement over these outlots when nothing's happening on them. I don't know why I raised my voice. You seem like nice people. Why am I yelling? What am I doing? But I'm so sincere about it. I, I mean, what do you need it for?
And Jason, I think the intent is that we have an eas, I don't think it's an easement over the entire outlot. It's an easement from like, say, the, the right-of-way to the wetland, or to wherever structures we have.
We've done it as a general practice, so any outlots that are going to be further subdivided or developed, we do put a drainage and utility easement over it in case there are any intermittent drainage issues, in which case the property owner is probably not going to respond to the case. That would give the city the ability to go and rectify it, or any of a safety concern or any others, without claims of trespassing or other, other concerns. One thing we have done, this has become an issue with some other developments as well. They don't like to dedicate it on the plat, because now it becomes a recorded document, which you must later vacate through a public hearing process. What we've done is not required the easements to be dedicated with the plat, but instead a separate agreement be entered and recorded against the property, that having a clause or a provision in there to automatically expire when a final plat is later determined on there. So that, that has lowered the red flags, if you will, through the title process, when there's acquisitions and transactions going on. So we've had good luck with it. We would recommend having that on there just for protection of the city. But if you, if you didn't want to have it, I mean, to their point, there is not utilities or facilities that need to be maintained by the city on a regular basis. So it, it could be considered to go without, but we would recommend it just as a precaution.
Is that the first time you've heard of that agreement, Ken, from the city?
Yeah, and let me add to that. Why don't, why don't we come to that road, bad choice of words. Why don't we come to that after we do something beyond build roads?
Jason, how's it decided where the easement goes? Does it just follow the road?
It's just a little bit of a lot, and it's a period, is how we're done.
I see the point of not having a DU over the entire, when you got to record it, unrecord it. It just can make it cumbersome. I like the agreement road better, period, I guess, myself, but.
And it's not uncommon, you know, to, to request something like that, like Jason had said. It's, if there's a drainage issue, somebody has to go rectify it. And, and oftentimes, if there isn't, you know, the developer's not currently there working on a project, they don't have iron nearby. They don't have, you know, they have to pick up the phone and call somebody to get them out there. And Public Works has got a dozer, they've got a front-end loader, they've got dump trucks. They can get there right of-way if they need to, to do something, and then they're not trespassing either.
Might I suggest this? Why don't you make, if we're getting along here, why don't we make the motions that we've talked about? Throw that one in there. I'll be able to talk to the attorney about it. This is kind of coming, it's kind of like the trail. We, we switch sides, you know, kind of like the cul-de-sac. We, all of a sudden, we got a new, we got a new extension to the road. But, you know, why don't we do that? Because I, I want you to be happy, and it sounds like you especially, you know, I saw a lot of heads bobbing. Sarah, are you on board with that?
Yeah, yes.
I just want to be sure, I, I want to move. You know, I'm getting old. I got to get this done before I die. I want to get this thing done. So why don't you put it in your recommendations? And then I'll run that up the flagpole. It sounds reasonable to me, but I'm not the lawyer. So let's do that.
And we don't make decisions up here anyways, right? The decision gets made by city council, so you have some time to figure that out.
I was more curious on, you know, it doesn't seem like there's a ton of improvements going on on this site. So how would you deal with it if there was flooding issues today? I mean, that's, that's the way I was thinking about it.
It's the same, but they are, they are changing drinking patterns with the road.
Okay.
But it is largely untouched.
Yeah. And how I was thinking about it too, is say they sold an outlot, it got developed. We still have all these other outlots. Now what if an issue came up?
That may be a good time to readdress this, to be honest with you. I thought of that as well. You know what? We come in with something, because that, that person, even if they handle all of their water, could have an impact on, on something else. Not so much the little lot on the north left, but we start going down and doing that big lot, now we're, you know, just a waterway away from, we're a waterway from everything. You know, I, I hear what you're saying. That's a good time to, you know, you do something on the north, you better think about all of it. You do something on the south, you better think about all of it.
If there was a drainage issue, what's it hurting?
Today it's not.
The owner, right, the, yeah, the owner is all a little bit.
If once a lot gets developed, if there was one, that's what would be a concern.
I guess for this, I'm, I'm not the expert in this field, but I would see it unnecessary to have the easement now. I'll just let it go until the development occurs.
Yeah, I'm okay with no easement. I'm okay with the agreement if we can figure it out myself.
Jason, or somebody sent me the effort of trying to correspond between plat sheets and grading plan sheets. The ponds that are being proposed on both the north segment of the project and the south segment of the project, are all of those, are, they are not within the outlots, correct? The outlots are outside of those areas?
They're separate outlots.
What's that?
Separate outlots. So the ponds, the, the permanent BMPs are within their own outlots. And I think the applicant is providing a permanent.
Easement on those, okay. Because those really are the items that would potentially need maintenance, right?
Those I would, yeah, I would say those are essentially critical. I'd bet they'd be placed over that. The others would be based on.
And we don't have a problem with those.
Part of the agreement, I guess, this is just a question for Jason and yourself, Ken, is once an outlot develops, you're not planning to grade a lot of the other outlots? That, you know, some problems with drainage could arise.
Correct. And we have to get the grading plan in separately approved here anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, typically, the grading plan's approved with the preliminary plat.
Okay. Well, we have a grading plan in, but obviously if somebody starts moving stuff around, everybody's going to look at it.
Well, and we're surrounded by wetlands, right? So these kind of outlots are really their own pieces. So I see them each developing individually, unless there's some dirt sharing that can happen, and therefore we would transfer dirt. But other than that, I don't see them being graded at the same time.
Yeah, and I was just thinking if you don't grade it at the same time, that can create potential stormwater issues.
But really, they're locked between wetlands, and that's where the, it's a unique site for sure.
I got some good news. I got nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
All right, this is a public hearing, so at 7:19, I will open the public hearing. Anyone here to comment on this one? Anyone online for this one? Well, then I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
I would just say with some of the critical issues, just to make sure we're kind of, in particular, I want to be on the same page as the couple engineers up here. The only one that seems like it's a little up in the air, maybe it's not, but is the road right-of-way width. I guess if you guys have strong opinions on something, I'd like to hear it before I can weigh in.
I mean, if Ken's open to going to 60 feet, I'm fine with that.
Agreed.
If it's, if it has to be 50, I'd like to see a section and put a little more thought into it. But 50 seems, or 60 seems plenty to be workable.
And the current preliminary plat that we're approving is at 60, or we're gonna make it a condition that it's 60, John?
I believe the developer's gonna revise the plat.
Okay, before goes to council?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that, it sounded like we all shook our heads up. We were okay with no, no, the road doesn't necessarily have to be shown on the preliminary plat north of the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Yep.
So to be clear, the cul-de-sac ends at, I'm gonna say the.
Just north of.
The wetland.
The wetland, right there.
This will not be shown on the preliminary or the final.
And I'll clarify, I was wrong on that one. I was looking at the, looked to be the concept plan that started.
I was looking at that first one, too.
Yeah, because it's the first one in the packet, so that's exactly where my focus went. So, you know, really, my original concern on that was fixed by the drawings further in the packet.
I will make a motion to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to move this from 2020 staging to current staging, as well as to amend the zoning map from A1 to GMU 5. And I'll also make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions we discussed here.
The 60-foot right-of-way and not showing the right-of-way to the north property line?
Yeah, and I guess, I don't know if this is part of it, but the condition of, I'm, well, we didn't really, I'm okay with just an agreement on the DNU over the outlots versus having a DNU easement.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you so much for taking all this time. I appreciate it a lot. I really.
Thank you, and good luck. This goes to.
My client, by the way.
This goes to council.
October 22nd.
Thank you again.
All right, next up, we have item 9A, resolution finding of the acquisition of certain properties by the City of Dayton is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan.
We're trying to make a short title for you. So there's a story with it. So the city is in need of a third fire station. The council's agreed to purchase a ladder truck, which we would take, agree, take delivery in 2028. By that year, by 2028, it needs a place to go. So currently, the ladder truck would only fit in Station 1 and 2. If there's other trucks that are moved out of there, and if we move those trucks, then they also need a home. So the intent, again, is to build a new Fire Station 3 by the year 2028. We had looked at building a fire station on a tax forfeit property off of Dayton Parkway and County Road 81. The council determined that that is not the highest and best use of that property, and then directed staff to find another location. The city completed a fire services study, and I'm not sure if that's the right term for it, but I don't know, call it that. In this past May, the study had determined the optimal location for fire stations without any assumptions as far as future growth goes. So the idea is, if Station 1 and 2 were replaced by new Station 1 and 2, these are the best places to go, where they would provide an eight-minute response time to every, most places in the city. Neither one of those locations have access to sewer and water, and Station 3 will need access to sewer and water. So that criteria, the search criteria then, for us, became the area along 117th and East Frenchlike Road. So this is 117th, East Frenchlike Road. We reached out to many property owners and have negotiated the sale price or the purchase price for this property. It is nine and a half acres. It's probably larger than what we would need for a fire station. We've also discussed having a fire training center, and then potentially a future location for a civic, a future civic campus. So City Hall, and anything that might go with it over the next, I'm gonna say for the next 50 to 100 years. So staff's position is to look at this as kind of a big-picture item of what is our needs for the time when we're built out. Right now, the need is for a fire station. Statutorily, in order for us to purchase land, the planning agency is required, or the statute requires the planning agency to review compliance with the comprehensive plan. So this is the comprehensive, future comprehensive land use plan at the left. The location is here circled in white. The land is guided medium-density residential, as well as commercial, neighborhood commercial, and greenway overlay areas. The greenway overlay area would be, I'm gonna say, this wetland complex in the woods that connect the two. The comprehensive plan does not designate any land for a future public services area. It's just not something that we had thought about. So again, the request tonight is for the commission to determine if this is compliant with, or consistent with, the comprehensive plan.
I have a question. I was, I've been out talking to people in the city for reasons. And someone mentioned that at one point, we were in, we're starting agreements with Rogers and Champlin to get fire, like, to share fire services closer to the borders, and so that we don't all need to go buy this equipment, right? We can share it and put a fire station closer to the border. And that, that plan just kind of fizzled and died during the transition, because there was a lot of turnover everywhere in the city at that time. So just wondering, was, like, what happened with that?
Sure. It might be a better question for Dennis.
What happened with that?
I think about when we had heard Otsigo was starting to look at putting in their own station and whatnot. Zach had reached out to them, and I think he also talked to Rogers at the time. Otsigo wasn't interested. I don't know that there was a lot of interest right by Rogers, but there's also been some churn over there. I don't know. I do not understand it, because each city having all these facilities, to me, is bunkers.
Yeah.
But here we are.
It would make more sense to share.
I agree, but, yeah, and so, you know, whatever, regardless of what goes into this land, you know, there's probably, it probably has some utility, you know, even if we're not talking about a station, but, so.
Right, does it have utility as future water plant area, or is that kind of too far out of where we're hoping to put the south water plant?
No, that would actually be right in the area.
That's what I thought, too. I was like, that seems like a good spot for that.
Right in the middle of our proposed well field, so.
Got it. That's what I thought.
And you know what? If we can't use it, we can sell it, but.
I guess my, my only thought on it, I mean, I don't mind, certainly don't mind the added fire station closer, closer to my neighborhood. Because at one point, I looked at joining, and technically, I was too far by five minutes to join the fire department. But one of the things that just struck me as a training facility here, this doesn't seem like the opt, of the three fire locations, station locations, this doesn't seem like the optimal training facility, so that'd be my only concern. This is definitely, at least currently, in much more residential, maybe in the future when there's more stuff around it. But with the new build-out and knowing how vocal that neighborhood was when we, when the substation wanted to build out, just something to note, so.
Yeah, it seems like a great spot from a proximity to neighborhoods and our future, you know, commercial hub with Dayton Parkway extension. Could be a great spot for a city hall if that gets relocated, or, but yeah, I agree, the training site. I mean, but again, like, at some point, a lot of Dayton gets built out, right? So like, you know, if you want training, you gotta just kind of find a spot that's big enough that you can isolate it a little bit.
Fire training that's happening right now, here.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean, doesn't mean they're always, doesn't mean they're starting fires. It just means they're training on the equipment and procedures.
I'm thinking back to the days when I lived in the West Metro Fire Department District in Crystal, and the training facility they had in New Hope was pretty substantial. I'm thinking about that one, not, not what they're doing here.
The stuff they do here is fine. I live right here. It doesn't bother me at all.
Yep, so.
It's kind of cool when they bring the helicopter from that somewhere.
But the kids like it.
So that'd be the only thing, just to make sure, whatever gets built there outside of an actual station, probably gets some input.
My thoughts, and it really doesn't relate to what we're tasked with, meaning consistency with the comp plan, but I just don't think this is a great fire station location from a standpoint. This is some pretty optimal land. I mean, you just look at the surrounding features. I hate to put public infrastructure there when that's better suited, I get we need land, and this is the one that was available, but it's just such great natural features there for some subdivisions that people wish we hadn't Dayton. And if you put a fire station there, that's gone. Whether that be a medium density or even low density, I mean, it's surrounded by areas that aren't gonna change because of the topography and the wetlands, that I'm just, I, I would hope that we could find a better location, and I'll just leave it that, you know, whenever we put this fire station in, the land's probably only gonna be 10% to 15% of the overall cost. So I wish we wouldn't be focused on the land now. And not saying this wouldn't be a good site for the city, maybe for something else, but buying a site now just for a fire station, when it's not maybe the, and maybe this was the ideal location. I'm not sure there was other locations that people thought more ideal. I would have figured it'd be better to be closer to Dayton Parkway. I mean, it's not like it's that far away, but it's, you know, now that Dayton Parkway shifted, it's further away. Thus, our current comp plan has this commercial, because Dayton Parkway was right next to it. John, any advice on how to interpret consistent with the comp plan when it's a public institutional use?
Sure. So I'm gonna say the black, well, it's open interpretation by the planning commission. So I'll add, you know, when you look at the future land use map, I mean, we have land that's just, that's guided for parks and open space, not for government or institutional uses. It's just, it's, we're a small category. You know, parks take up a lot of space, and so it's easier to say, okay, we're looking long-term, and this land should be designated park or open space. It's harder when you look at, you know, it's a fire station, or a Public Works garage, or a new city hall. Those can go to many different places, but it comes down to when do you need to, when do you need to build it? That's when you need the land.
Yeah, and I would think that even, I mean, I don't know this, but even with the DDL site, I would hope that, I mean, they're gonna have land for sale once they get it figured out. Is, how much land do we need for a fire station-ish?
I want to say, yeah, well, I was just gonna round it to five to 10, so.
Yeah, well.
I think they could get by with three, but they want six in case there's a training center and, you know.
Is that common, that there's training centers with cities?
No.
That's a potential revenue, potential revenue or potential liability, depending how it goes.
Yeah, right now, they can't make the money work. I don't speak at a big grant.
Yeah, again, I'm not, I get we need a fire station down there, and we need land. I would just hope that the city leaders would stay open-minded. Versus if you buy the site for the fire station and lock into it, I mean, even if you end up buying the site, I'd keep, keep looking around for potentially a better site.
I think you're gonna have to lock in pretty soon, though. 2028's really not that far away. We're almost 2025. You've got to get through architectural, you've got to get through all of that, and then you got to build the thing. And at some point, you're gonna have to pull the trigger on what it's going to be at some point, kind of soon. Fire trucks often get delayed, so I wouldn't be shocked if it's 2029 when that thing shows up, but I, you know, to your, to what you're saying, I don't think if you say, let's buy this and let's keep looking, I don't think that window's even really that big to keep looking, because I do think at some point that you got to move and start developing some plans to build something on it. You know, I mean, it's just not that far away. From the perspective of whether or not it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, is it a reach to think, you know, the master plan that we had looked at, we had looked at all three options, has this varying from low to medium-density residential, understanding residential areas need a fire station? That's not a reach, right? I mean, so I think it would be consistent. If you're planning this area for residential, I think putting a fire station there is consistent, or, you know, public institutional use, I think, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I do like all the multi, multifaceted possibilities for the site, though. It is larger than a fire station needs, but, you know, we have talked a lot about an additional water, you know, a new water plant, and having it right within the well field area, you know, makes that a pretty good multi-use site. But I don't disagree that it would be a great residential development site as well.
How much space does the water treatment need?
Good question. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say our initial look was 10 to 15 acres for the full build-out of the plan. It wouldn't need to be that big initially, but we'd want the room to expand to that.
Would it be a central plant when it's done?
It'd be essential to serve the south half of the city, essentially.
So that's still big enough then, for both?
No. That's pretty big, though.
That, yeah, it's a lot of land. And that might be a conservative, just to make sure we protect enough for the future expansions, but.
Pressure filters or gravity filters?
Gravity was what was originally considered.
Well, the downside, too, is it's a little landlocked. There's a property to the west, but that property looks like it's a pretty nice property. And you got wetlands to the east, so if you needed to grow it to get more room for the water system or something, it wouldn't really be able to be a challenge. But I think the location is consistent. I would agree. Location in general is good. It's on 117th, it's right by all the developing neighborhoods. It's gonna be really close to where Dayton Parkway comes through.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really contending with the consistency issue. I'm struggling with the concept a little bit, but I don't think that that's, I just think that there's better sites for a fire station, in particular, along Dayton Parkway. Especially, you know, if, long-term planning, there's gonna be a pretty dense area to the north. Like, having it a little bit closer there, but I get it. If that, if we have timelines, I mean, it is what it is.
Most likely Dayton Parkway won't be there yet when this needs to get built.
No, but even, even if you could find a site on Dayton Parkway, that would. No, but even, even if you could find a site on Dayton Parkway, that would help tremendously.
We don't even know where Dayton Parkway's going.
No, no, closer on one seventeenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know this, I just know that when I campaigned, I know two of those homeowners said they'd sell any day. So, like, they can't wait. They quit, quit fixing up their homes and everything because they thought it was gonna happen.
So, what's being asked is for a motion and a second for approve a resolution. So, this is a resolution finding that the acquisition of certain property by the city of Dayton is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan.
I'm gonna come out and see to approve the alliance with the comprehensive plan.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes five zero. Next item, discussion of Met Council Imagine 2025.
It's a quick one. So, and I know the commission's familiar with this, but I'll try to explain it for anyone that's not. So, the city has a comprehensive plan, which is a twenty-year guide, which we update every ten years of how we would like the city to grow, and it's both for land use, water, transportation, there's this whole laundry list. Our comprehensive plan is based on the Met Council's comprehensive plan, and if they don't call it a comprehensive plan, it's a, a long list of policies and goals. The Met Council is going through their draft policy statements currently. It was issued in the middle of August, and they're taking public comments through Monday. The document itself is over a thousand pages, I've struggled to get through, I think I've got through three chapters of it, but, but again, the, the Met Council's soliciting public comments on it. Issues that we've noticed that affect Dayton are specific to density. And, I'm gonna back up a little bit, so the Met Council has jurisdictions over the seven counties. Each community or each portion of the community is provided a community designation, so in Dayton, we are designated a suburban edge community, here we are, similar to Ramsey, Maple Grove, and portions of Rogers and Corporate. Within the suburban edge communities, currently, we are guided to have a residential density of three units per acre, that is proposed to change to four units per acre, and so trying to figure out what does that mean. Generally speaking, it means more smaller lots, and so for Dayton, this would be more R3 zoning districts rather than R1 zoning. We do have, as the commission is probably aware of, the majority of the projects that have been coming through have been, coming through either in the R3 district or as a PUD. This graphic below is the density, gross density and net density metrowide as well as in Dayton. So again, this line here is the three units per acre, that is the current guide. If it's shifted to four units per acre, four units per acre, net density, the dark blue line is what Dayton's net density has been since two thousand nine with a couple of years that are missing. So, as we have development, and, and development is, so, so, I can't pronounce this word, changes, how about that? Okay, cyclical, cyclical, there we go. You know, some years we have a lot of development going on, and then the next year, it's more of a build year, and then the year after that, it, it's more, you know, when I say development, it's preliminary plats and final plats that are approved. So, for example, in twenty twenty-two, we had three point seven units per acre, in twenty twenty, we had one point five units per acre, so it goes up and down, but the intent again is that it averages out to three units.
Now, that, to clarify, that's what was proposed in that given year of the platted, or is that?
For final plats.
Final plats received, that's not the net density of, of the whole city as it's developed.
And it makes a difference how many lots, you know, so twenty twenty-three, we had three plats that went through, you know, two of them were very small projects, and one of them was Sundance Green's ninth edition, I don't remember how many units that were, but wanna say it was a couple dozen. So again, kinda what does this mean for Dayton is, if the intent is only to have single-family housing, we're, we would really struggle to reach that four units per acre. What's, the projects that are being proposed have a lot of townhomes, as we start growing, we're gonna go and get more pressure for multifamily, that's gonna bring up our density. One of the other changes is that the Met Council is going to require that we reach these four unit density marks within a ten-year cycle. So, for example, if we're guiding certain land for low density within a ten-year period, we have to have another piece of, another area that's guided high density in order to balance it to four units. I think the council had a question if, you know, what happens if the density doesn't get built and it just doesn't get built? We can't control the market, we can only plan for it. What else? Question of what is net density? So, you have the gross density, so say, just use simple math of a one acre lot or one acre project, you take the gross density of that acreage and subtract out wetlands, water, parks and trails, public open space, arterial roadway, so this is not the local streets, this is more so the county roads, steep slopes and any land that is permanently protected. So, the intent here is, like drainage utility easement is not permanently protected, a conservation easement is. And so the thought is just thinking out loud, when we get to projects that have a very low density, if the lack of density is, is a concern, we can require conservation easements, which would then take land out of that net density calculation.
Gross or net?
Net density.
You said the word require, can we legally require someone to put a conservation easement on there?
As part of the plating process.
We can?
Yeah. I'm not aware of any communities that have done this purposely, so this is, I don't know how this is gonna work in reality.
I just think of like, if you're trying to require a certain amount of open space, we can't really dictate that either. I mean, we, if our code allows it, it allows it, because that conservation easement's essentially open space, so it's, maybe if it's just converting open space to conservation easement, it's another deal?
I'll use the example with the planning and development where everything is flexible.
Yeah, that's PUD, different story, I get it.
Yeah, so let's say there's something we're trying to preserve, whether it's a wetland buffer area or a wooded area, that can be included as a conservation easement rather than just a general, whether it's a drainage utility easement or just nothing at all.
I have a question about the, well, I have feelings, but the four per acre, that's only for new buildings, they're not looking at anything else that's already here or not here?
The Met Council will look at it citywide, so that, that is also, I've forgotten that, that is also a change between the current plan and the fut- the twenty fifty plan. The city, the Met Council wants us to have four units per acre citywide, so it's not just looking at new development.
That is just new development.
But you could still slap high density on something that's already developed.
You could redevelop it, yeah.
Yeah, right, meaning to meet the requirements, so you could put high density on it, even though it's currently, I'm just, low density to meet the requirement.
Do you eventually pinch yourself, though, to the point, because don't we need Met Council's approval to make those changes? At some point, you might get to there and force yourself into only being able to develop high density, say once we get to a full build out scenario? And you get there, and the only thing we're looking at is high density, and the market's not supporting it, so then it just sits.
What are the ramifications if we don't hit it? Like, what can they do?
Well, yeah, what can they do to us?
Well, it's nothing, then it just cycles through to the next.
There'll be another ten-year cycle before we, maybe three more cycles before we gotta work on that.
You might push it somewhere else, right?
But, but one of the problems is that I see with this, that we've encountered here, is someone, a developer will come in and they'll have, you know, two, two units per acre or something like that, and we'll sit and argue about it that it's not meeting the Met Council. That's, that's one of the, the concerns I've, I've had for the longest time is just, you know, Met Council's only gonna force us to go denser.
Yeah, yeah, those screws aren't gonna loosen.
Right.
You're just gonna see more developments come in that have more and more of the, the tight lots.
Right, and when I say with the high density of targeting the existing areas, you try to be strategic about where it might actually happen someday, because that's also what spurs redevelopment sometime is, is, you know, if it's actually ripe for development, it might not be, you know, that increases their property value tremendously that they're like, yeah, let's sell and move on to somewhere else.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have a, a zone that is not calculated as part of our density?
Rural estate.
Rural estate.
So, if I understand the Met Council correctly, that would be included in the net density calculation for citywide.
Would be now?
Would be now.
It would be now, but it wasn't in the past.
Correct.
You should confirm that.
That would be something to confirm.
That's my understanding.
Because that, I mean, that's one way certain properties could get out of this, and if you go back to what the classifications were.
New properties? Or we can't create any more RE according to that council? Those are in the comp plan? If it's in the comp plan, they can put their stamp of approval on it or not. If it's not in the comp plan, that's up for debate.
What happens if they don't approve our comp plan?
Eventually, it goes to court and we become a...
They'll sue you.
Yeah.
And then their threat to you is that if you don't comply, you owe this because we put this infrastructure in, and then you eventually have the cave because we can't pay that if the court wins, or court loses.
It really depends on, yeah, I mean, the initial one was, I don't remember which city it was, but.
Lake Elmo.
Lake Elmo. And basically, Met Council came in and did all their planning for them for a while. Oak Grove has sued them a couple times, or they've taken Oak Grove to court a couple times, and they've lost, but it depends on the topic and it's not pretty.
Well, it seems to me at four units an acre, everyone in the city, planning commission, community people, we have to really think hard of what we want our city to look like from a standpoint of, you know, how we spread different products around the city. And part of it might be is trying to contact some market participants that are willing to come in and talk about different products, so we all become more knowledgeable on them. Like, the forty-foot lots, it's like, I, I don't wanna see a ton of that, and I think, I think it's kind of a fad too, it's just a function of the market. But I was also just thinking about urban lots, like when you drive through some of the older cities, is maybe we have to have some areas that it's still single-family, but it more resembles urban lots. I don't know if the market's there for that product, because it doesn't really exist, but things are gonna change fast when, you know, people have to scramble to make it work, especially because multifamily is, everyone's correct here that it goes in cycles, and we could easily see very little multifamily unless it's affordable housing for the next five to six years.
If I may, there was another topic that they had brought up, I think they referred to it as an IUP, which is unfortunate acronym, but they want cities now to tell them, they want a section in the comp plan that will tell them what we're gonna do with undeveloped land before it's developed, what we will allow to have happen to it. So right now, where we have an ordinance, this is forty per acre, Met Council doesn't know about that. This section would tell them that that's gonna be what we're gonna allow to property prior to it being developed, which means they can now not approve the comp plan because of that section. Does that make sense? So, basically, I think there's a loophole right now where we can go down to some acreage before, we can leave something guided as low density, but we can subdivide it down. This section would allow them control over that. I don't know how else to describe it, I mean, at the meeting, they were saying that without that, we really can't subdivide any egg lots, so.
So, currently, the, the agricultural zoning district, it's one, one house per forty acres, forty acre minimum lot size, and that's preserve agriculture as well as preserve land for future sewer development. With the new comprehensive plan and this new phase, they're looking at allowing some flexibility of doing, referring to four per forty density, so four homes per forty acres, and this is, I think this was discussed at the meeting that you're referring to, I just received a letter yesterday kinda confirming this. So, we have the ability now to change our agricultural zoning to one per ten. What we're talking about is instead of one per ten, it's just four units per forty acres. It's still the same number of homes, but there's flexibility in lot size, so you might have a five acre lot and a fifteen acre lot, but it averages out to the same density.
John, did that letter say we could?
With the twenty fifty comprehensive plan, so I guess that the, with the new next comp plan phasing. So, the follow-up question is, can we do that now?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I think I know the answer to it, but, I think we can, but it's up to the lawyers to decide, but.
So this is still, I mean, it's still open for comment until October seventh?
Yes.
But they don't care about our comments?
They do.
Oh, they do?
They'll take comments after October seventh.
They might not listen or might not agree.
We might not agree, yeah.
But I mean, if they don't, if, like, I guess my question is, if everyone came out and said, we hate this, what are the chances they're gonna change it? Yeah, so then they don't care about our comments. Like, if, that's like me asking my students for their opinion and then not doing anything with that information, I'm like, well, I really care about your opinion, except for it doesn't matter, because nothing you say will change anything. Like, if nothing we say will change anything, then they don't care about our comments.
So, the, the Met Council consists of, I believe it's seventeen appointed members, so they represent, you know, three and a half million people, and I don't remember how many cities, so we're one of several cities.
I mean, I'm happy to comment, it's just sometimes it feels like all of this was decided long ago.
Was there any discussion about, I'm more thinking the longer term and what product might look like, but with fully developed cities? Is this gonna impact them at all? Are they way over four units an acre because of their redeveloping, or are they, are denser because of those different product types then?
So, Anoka, for an example, is at a, we'll say fourteen units an acre.
But they're different, because they're such a little footprint, and then they have like a bigger downtown dense area, government center area compared to most cities.
Sure, so Bloomington would be classified the same, also built out.
What are they?
Fourteen units an acre.
They're fourteen? How about a Brooklyn Park? Because they're almost, besides the, their commercial stuff, they're pretty much built out.
Seven units an acre. Same with Champlin.
Maple Grove is pretty much.
Built out too.
Well, built out too, they're the same classification, but when they built out, they were able to build out at a smaller density.
What are they at, do you have them?
Four units.
They're four?
Same as.
Well, that's, that's what they're going towards. That's what they're guided, but they're basically built out, and they were able to build out at a smaller unit per acre.
Because they built out early.
Because they built out early, yeah.
Yeah, like Minnetonka, they, their code still requires half acre lots.
So, I don't, I don't think we're gonna find a comparable.
I was more trying to think of what does four units an acre look like for people to think about product types?
It's just more multifamily, right?
Well, you drive through Brooklyn Park, if that's a good example, I mean, it's a big, it's a mix of everything.
Brooklyn Park is probably, I would guess there's portions of Brooklyn Park that are easily four units per acre.
Yeah, the Zane Avenue is loaded with apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put apartments in, so you can have other areas of the town that are bigger lots.
So, in our R3 zoning district, the minimum lot size for a single family is sixty-five hundred square feet, which is well over four units an acre. You still have to count for streets and, you have stormwater.
What's the minimum lot width in R3 again? Sixty-two on Avenue? What's the minimum lot width in R three again? Sixty-two average?
Sixty-two average, fifty.
Yeah, so that's gonna, that's gonna dictate it more than the size.
Yeah.
You're gonna end up with average, you want bigger lots, if that's, you gotta meet that average.
But it feels like when we do these apartments and stuff and we say we're gonna bank it so we can have these larger lot, like, it feels like we never actually do that.
Well, it's all the.
We haven't built apartments because of the market.
But it's all, yeah, it's all basically the developers coming to us, right? It's not us.
The one thing. Yeah, the one thing we can do with apartments is again, our apartment code is light on the minimum units per acre. I think to protect ourselves, we need to get that up to a, a level that's gonna help with this code. Cause I believe, is it twelve units only?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, we need to have that north of twenty.
Well, and see, I'm of the opposite opinion because if we make it north of twenty now, in ten years, we're gonna be looking at seven units per acre.
Exactly.
As our minimum.
Explain.
Met Council's gonna change it from four to seven. And, and then, and then we're gonna have to build thirty units per acre at the apartments at that time versus we can get by with twelve units per acre now.
I'm exactly there. I'm more saying that the product type that goes up should be three to four stories minimum.
We're not precluding that though right now. We're not precluding.
We would let a two-story multifamily unit go up and meet the twelve units an acre.
Yeah.
And that is leaving in.
But that does.
That was, that'd be leaving density even if we stayed at three, four, or five.
But us doing that now doesn't, doesn't help us in the future when Met Council says you can't go from, you can't go four anymore, you gotta go to seven.
Yeah, so when you.
It doesn't help us.
Right, but what can't, what doesn't help us either is if they build two stories because it's more feasible today.
It doesn't hurt us.
We gotta play more catch up then.
But I thought they don't look at previous stuff, they're only looking at new stuff, aren't they?
That's my understanding was they're only looking at new build, not, not existing builds. So if.
I thought he said the entire city has to be formed.
I'll, I'll need to confirm that either way.
Yeah, it, it doesn't go back in stuff that's.
So it doesn't stay. Yeah, there's a little bit of disconnect because I thought the entire city had to be formed.
No, it's, it's just development.
So Peter, go ahead.
I just need a clarifying question. So you're, you're implying that the more successful you are in driving that number up, the higher Met Council will push us in the future?
That.
So you're saying it.
What I'm saying is if we, if we make our own requirements stricter on units per acre, that doesn't do us any good. Now, that means we're gonna be building, all of our multifamily will be more dense now than it needs to be. And when the Met Council goes to tighten our, when the Met Council goes to tighten, tighten the screws to make it seven units an acre or eight or whatever. That's already built, that's already.
We've used up all.
That's already done in the past. And now we're building, now we're building thirty units per acre on multifamily.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's looked at, I don't know if it's annually or five or a ten-year period on, so a ten-year period, in that ten-year period, all new development has to reach four units per acre now. And then the next ten-year period has to reach seven. It doesn't hurt us to have higher now because it's just more people in, in tax base and residents that are supporting businesses and everything, right? That we're driving now.
It does not hurt us, but we're not precluded from doing that. We can build a twelve unit per acre or we can build a twenty unit per acre right now. But why make ourselves more restrictive on market? I mean, back to the market, what's driving the market?
Well, the market's not gonna build below twenty right now anyways.
Yeah.
I don't understand, I would make our, well, what's gonna happen in the market is that the cheaper the product and someone just wants to sell their land. Cause that's why most stuff doesn't happen at twelve units an acre is the land price is pretty minimal. Once you start getting the, then people sell their land. But that's why it's like, why not have that minimum to make sure we're covered with density even at three units an acre? I mean, if we want bigger lots elsewhere in the city, we gotta require more density someplace, somewhere else.
But my problem with that thought is if we bank stuff now when the threshold is lower and they turn the screws, essentially what we're putting in the bank is shrinking.
Yes, I understand your concern.
We're getting a negative return on our investment of banking it for the future. And Peter, when you said, well, Maple Grove did this because they built out earlier, to me that screams, well, we better be building now.
Building now.
To the minimum.
Yep.
You know, building as big of lots as we possibly can now because that screw is gonna keep getting turned. And I don't know that Met Council is necessarily gonna look at us and say, hey, you're doing really good, you're, you're overshooting your projection, let's turn it harder. No, I just think with time, they're just slowly gonna turn it no matter.
That's gonna happen regardless.
It's just gonna keep going and keep going and keep going.
Right.
And I think if, you know, we wanna preserve our own character.
Yeah, but even with this ten years.
We build them now.
Even with this ten-year cycle though, I mean, that's the whole point. If we really want larger lots, then we need to make up density somewhere else.
But we need, we need.
I would argue we just do that later.
And. No, I'm sorry, with this ten-year cycle of four units an acre, if, because most multifamily probably won't even get built yet. Kind of whatever we designate might not get built, we don't know. I mean, single family will, but, but that's my whole point. If you want bigger lots, you, we need to make it up somewhere and we're not gonna make it up in a ten-year cycle.
I'm just afraid they're slowly gonna take it away. You know, and our, our idea of bigger lots right now are gonna be quite a bit smaller than when we can actually cash in on what we banked. We may, I, I, I truly believe we've got the best, you know, at heart by doing that and hey, cool, we can do high density here, that's gonna save us in the future. But I think it's gonna get compressed and it's gonna get shrunk and you're gonna get to the future and you're going, oh, great. That's not, that's not what we hoped, right? Cause it, you know, we got, we got squeezed even further.
But also I think if you require that higher density, there are gonna be properties where that's just not feasible. And then they won't do any multifamily, right? Like if they can't meet that maximum, then they're gonna do something else entirely. Where if we have, if, if it's still open to a lower option now, let's be as low, I, I wanna go for the minimum as much as possible. Because then that saves, you know, make that requirement. I would just hate to see properties that could be a low, medium density, I guess, be forced to do low because they can't do a high. Cause we've taken out the medium as an option, if that makes sense.
In our general mixed-use districts, for example, twelve units an acre is what we're, is what our requirement is.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're gonna get to a point where, you know, right now we're hearing people like, we're building too many cookie cutter houses, right? And right now cookie cutter houses are sixty-five foot lots, right? We're gonna get to a point in time where we're gonna wish we could still build sixty-five foot lots. We need to build those sixty-fives now. That's what I'm saying.
And we need a road.
Huh?
That we need a road called Dayton Parkway.
But you, you know what I mean, right? I think there's going to be a point in time where we're gonna wish we could build sixty-fives and we just can't.
What's, what's Dean's proposal? What's his?
He didn't have many, yeah, because he had to go to those. Because to try to get us some sixty-fives, right? So it's already going now.
Was a big end. I mean, from forty to forty, fifty, fifty-five and sixty-five.
Yeah, I think we all agree there's.
What's his, what was his density in the end?
No one ever calculated the net density.
That, just so you know, John, that'd be very useful for all these conversations to have that in those packets. I get sometimes when the applicant doesn't make it easy on you, doesn't make your job easy, but.
That's a good point to try to compare it to what we saw.
Yeah, cause that was a lot.
That's pretty, that was pretty dense. I think.
I felt like it was well north.
I thought I could get a little five because I was trying to do some math and that was more gross. So the net will be.
You have to pull some.
Yes, to me, if, if we're gonna build an apartment building somewhere, why not get them to build as dense of apartment building as we can so we can get a development like Dean's to spread out and have more sixty-five foot lots?
But nothing.
Yeah.
In this current building period.
I get that argument too. If you can build an apartment and you can really smash some density so that with the same plat, you can get some, some larger lots, I think that's great.
But doesn't that require them to be doing those at the same time?
Within the same period.
And not, but even just the same builder, can like one builder be like, well, that builder is doing a big giant apartment complex, so therefore I'm going to take, even though we have nothing to do with each other.
Ultimately, that would be up to the land developer selling to the different.
Timing and sequencing.
Building developers.
Like, uh, what's the name of the apartment going against the freeway? Like that should be as dense as crazy, right?
As much as possible right next to freeway, let's go.
Yeah, I mean, that should be as many.
I think Paul's articulating what I was trying to say better. Meaning that, that's kind of what I was trying to say is, is that in certain areas, we have these minimums that are probably, the reality is the market's gonna build more anyway, so I'm not that concerned.
Yeah.
It, no one's gonna build multifamily at twelve units an acre.
I, I agree with that, Paul, though, so because if you do have an apartment, let's go as, as dense as we can, stack another floor on it because it will help us to build larger lots. I just don't, I guess my gripe was we gotta stop thinking we're banking it for the future.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I wasn't meaning to bank it. I was meaning our code that when something gets built, we don't short sell ourselves because, you know, it's like detached garages too in multifamily. I mean, that's what'll happen if you go, go really low density, they're gonna say, well, then we want detached garages too. Maybe that's okay with people, but I'd prefer a little higher quality product.
Yeah, I think the residents would too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, I will say that I did do a rough calculation of the DCM farms for net density and it was right around five units per acre.
So you were right, it felt dense.
Gross was about three and a quarter.
And net is what we care about?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Comforting.
And we trimmed that down.
And it felt high when you looked at it.
Meaning less forty foot lots.
Yeah. So Dean, if you're listening.
And again, that's market, that's market driven, right? Cause he's not doing that for Met Council, he's doing that marketing, for a marketer.
For the home, yeah.
Yeah.
For the homes itself, there's, he's talking to home builders.
He did mention that he had heard us over the years talk about banking density. And, and you know, the banking density might make sense if Met Council wouldn't keep turning the screws and we could do it across the, the build out. But now that they've come down to these decade measurements and they are turning the screws, I think banking is no longer.
It's a net negative return on your banking, that's not good.
Right, there's no.
It's a ten-year game, right? Exactly, beginning of the ten-year game, you wanna make sure you're building, then you wanna bank.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so you don't get screwed in the end for the decade.
But is it moving? Is it like?
A rolling ten year?
It moves every ten years.
It moves every ten years, so if we're looking at, when would this start?
It says twenty fifty, is that when it starts or when it ends?
It's when it ends.
When it ends.
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty. So in twenty thirty to twenty forty would be the snapshot, twenty forty to twenty fifty would be the other. It's not that, okay, we're in twenty thirty-one, now it's twenty thirty-one to twenty forty-one.
That's gonna create a lot of challenges for a city like Dayton because high density goes in phases.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's created a lot of challenges.
Sure, just.
Maybe ten.
And without our. Well, and just think if Dayton Parkway is not, happens, it doesn't get built for fifteen years is we don't have a bunch of great spots for high density.
Right, I mean, we're very dependent on market demands, um, you know, we're fortunate to have ninety-four and that's a, you know, we've got land that's guided for high-density apartments and it's likely that the market will re, will fill that.
It's full of wetlands too.
It's full of wetlands too.
Can't go too tall on those buildings.
You know, if we've said, okay, you know, build apartments in the middle of Dayton, that's not gonna happen. We don't have a market for that, we're not gonna have a market for twenty, thirty years.
Do we have a question?
In Dayton Parkway, yeah.
You can get off.
Do you need any more direction from the planning commission on?
No, I'll, so my intent is to submit a comment on behalf of the city, uh, just with some of our, our concerns and.
You did talk, you did talk about trying to add a diversified rural area.
It, it is and I, so the diversified rural area is this light green.
Yep.
You know, so the Oak Grove, Northern Andover, um, you know, kind of the third or fourth ring that goes around the city. There's an area diverse, well, I, I'm sorry, this is the middle grade, grade of green. So there's some, uh, existing developed areas along the Crow River and Rogers. The thought was is to just extend that through Dayton and make a green belt around the village. And then the village would then become a rural center.
Can, can we get that added to properties north of River Road as well? Just the single family that kind of go down to the park?
We can ask.
They're already RE.
Oh, they are.
A lot of them are.
A lot of them are RE already.
Yep.
I think it, from this map, it, it look, it would make it look more uniform and there's a reason to do it with.
So no matter what the Met Council says, we still have zoning restrictions because of the Mississippi River corridor.
Yeah.
So, um, that's always going to be low density.
You know, the one thing I just caution you about a diversified rural district too is I know that that is maybe trying to accomplish a lot of the, the goals of the city. But, uh, I've seen it happen too that the property owners involved, that impacts them. If they don't want it, they're also another ones suing us because we hurt their property value because someday they can't do what they thought they were gonna do with it.
Correct, so there, there's a balance. When we try to keep everybody happy, we're going to make everybody mad. So I mean, that's just the reality of it.
I feel like we could look for win-wins. One of the questions I had, so part of the Met Council's excuse for this is, um, because housing is so ridiculously expensive and that's why. But, um, the reason why it's gotten so expensive is because more and more, you know, um, investment firms are buying up single-family homes to turn them into rentals and they're driving up the prices. Is there any discussion about limiting the amount of rentals in a neighborhood so that they can't do that?
There has not been at the council level.
Okay. Where has there been such conversation?
Not in Dayton.
Okay.
So, I know other communities that are built out where there's, um, I'll say more affordable housing, uh, that, that is a big concern. Where you have corporations that are buying, you know, uh, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar homes and, and using them as rentals. Um, I don't know how many rental properties we have, but it, yeah. Few enough that we, it's not been a concern in Dayton.
Okay.
Sidebar question, just because we did see a mobile home park expansion a few years ago, how does that play into our?
For the density?
Yeah.
It helps. I don't know, so that, that land that was intended to be an expansion for the mobile home park has sold. I don't know what the new owners intend on doing with that.
They both sued connections that they can't forget.
But it, it's also immediately adjacent to a rapidly expanding industrial park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's likely what it will become, you'd think.
Just, just more.
There's a lot of. I'll just say the land's challenging.
You know, around the mobile home park?
That, that piece that's sold, yeah.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right, moving on to item ten, notice and announcements.
For updates, uh, looking forward to the November meeting, so it will be a more busy one. We have three or four items, so we'll have a, Fisher Farms will have an interim use permit for a, a permanent event center. Territorial Grove, which is the name for a Pulte project off of Territorial Road and East French Lake Road. So we had a concept plan a couple of months ago.
Connects to the previous Pulte neighborhood?
Yes, so that's a forty-two single-family lots. And then I believe we'll have the Parkway neighborhood, so this is the six hundred fifty, um, apartment units. So for the Parkway neighborhood, you know, this is a large project, they'll, this will be done in phases. They're specifically looking for phase one, which is a hundred and eighty units.
Do they wanna make it two twenty?
Only if they get a quick trip.
That's right, that's right. You're not even well, they're getting one across the highlight.
So those are.
Other side too.
Yeah.
Definitely the three projects I can think of that will have, uh, oh, no, the fourth one is a cannabis ordinance. And Hayden is doing an excellent job writing.
Research too.
So that is it for updates.
I have a question about the, the sign ordinance, uh, for like garage sale signs, graduation signs and the like. I have seen a lot of comments on Facebook about people being very unhappy with how that has rolled out. What is the process if that's gonna be revisited? Like how, like what's the process to do that?
Sure, so to provide a little bit of history, so, um, the city received a number of complaints about signs in the right of way. So I'll just use like the pray to home signs as an example for that. Excuse me, in researching the ordinance, we, we did not prohibit signs in the city right of way. In county right of way, they were prohibited and they were prohibited from state right of way also. So the council, uh, adopted an ordinance amendment in twenty twenty-three that prohibited all signs within the right of way. Temporary, permanent, uh, I'll say the only exception was for pre-existing permanent signage, which there's three of them. It's, uh, Sunday, it's golf course and then two signs for a Daytona golf course. It's, uh, Sundance Golf Course, and then two signs for a Daytona Golf Course. Um, so otherwise, everything has to be out of the right of way. We're interpreting, now the right of way width varies row to row, um, where our interpretation is ten feet behind the pavement, whether it's pavement or curb. Um, so every Friday, uh, Public Works goes around, picks up the signs, uh, within the right of way. Um, oftentimes, later on that evening, they go back again, or at least a lot of the builders will put the signs back again, and they'll pick them up the next week.
Is it builders, or is it more advertisers, like lawn service? I'm not picking on any business, but you see all the advertising signs.
It's both, but what, what I'm seeing, you know, when I'm going home at night, is a truck and trailer full of the builder's signs that are going up.
Are we getting less and less week by week? Are they getting the hint, or are we chasing our own tail?
For the most part, we're chasing our own tail.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. They got more people than we do, right? We've only got so many, and there's a lot of builders, and there's a lot of people cleaning windows, and there's a lot of people on lawns.
Cleaning ducks.
Exactly, yeah, I mean.
So they figured it out, I think after the first two weeks, to put the signs up Friday night and or Saturday morning.
Sure.
So, um, we had a number of signs that were collected, um, that were not builder signs. Yeah, so, so, um, a lot of the signs that people are complaining about were collected. That same weekend, I noticed there were twenty-one builder signs just on the roundabout on Pine View, twenty-one.
I see, and I see the builders, they've got a big, they've got a truck with a big trailer.
Yep.
They got a ton of signs in the back of the trailer.
So, I suspect, so the mechanism is contact the council and say, fix this.
Okay.
Um, it was passed four to one, and you just gotta get two people to say, this is dumb. Cause it's not.
It's not working.
It's not, and I, I knew it wasn't gonna work, cause as soon as they said, we can't preclude Johnny's graduation sign, I knew we were headed for trouble. So.
And, and sorry, I don't know if you're going in this direction or not, but the question of can we, um, prohibit certain signs and not others? And, and the answer is no, we have to treat them all the same.
And that was the problem.
Yeah, I was concerned about lost dogs sign and stuff like that, right?
So, we can regulate the size of signs and the location, but not the content. So the content is all protected by the First Amendment, whether you have a, a builder's sign or a lemonade sign, it's all treated the same.
Okay, so they need to contact the council people to get it fixed?
Yeah, if there's enough squawk, the council will track staff to, let's rip this ordinance out. And then, yeah.
One dollar off your water bill for every sign you bring up on the park.
Oh, well, then I got things.
It's a good grassroots thing. Fifty cents, I don't know.
I got a ring to fill soon, I better start collecting signs. I have a quick comment slash suggestion to staff, but we haven't had a development update all year yet. And what I mean by that is, it'd just be good for all of us to be knowledgeable of what's going on with development.
Sure.
We don't see when phase five, or six, or nine, we don't see anything, so we just have no idea. So it'd be good to have something going on about the active subdivisions, that we get something, I mean, doesn't have to be every meeting, but you know what? More, it should be at least twice a year, if not four times a year.
Okay.
Well, part of that is like, if we're trying to meet the Met Council, like I have no idea if we're even close to meeting. Like, we, you know, so how, how am I supposed to say, oh, we're good or not good? I don't know, I have no idea. Cause we see the very early stages and have no idea what actually, cause that apartment, the apartment that might get us a lot of, that's been coming, I've seen it now, but it's been years, and that's, I have no idea when it's actually gonna, like, will it ever actually get built? So, yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Okay.
I think it also would help us understand the importance of other twenty-twenty staging areas that maybe haven't been opened yet, like, like we, I have no idea how much, like, in two, our year, are we gonna be out of lots? I, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Sure.
So I, I don't, I'm not pushing the open land, I just wanna make sure that we're studying what's next, so we have the issues identified before we, it's not just thrown in our plates.
Yeah, I, I don't have a staging plan, ma'am. So, um, we're, right now, we're, I, I'm gonna say the last five years, we've averaged around two hundred homes a year. Um, and about fifty acres of land that's been eaten up. Uh, where's a good map? You know, so right now, the development is focused south of a hundred seventeen. So we have, uh, Bravon that's in this area, and I'm gonna call it Brave, Bravon Trails and Bravon.
Bravon Trails and Bravon Trails East.
Bravon Trails East, I was gonna say one and two, or east and west. We have DCM farms that they will be submitting a preliminary plat as soon as possible, so you're gonna see that this winter. Um, these are very large projects, so my, my guess is that once these are platted, you know, that, you'll have preliminary plat, and final plat will be in stages, and it's going to take several years to, for these two projects.
I wouldn't bank on that, I don't know where interest rates are going, but your comment's gonna be very dependent on what happens with interest rates.
Sure, yeah.
If interest rates drop, because of there's a recession, we're quickly gonna be out of recession in terms of home building.
Yeah, if interest rates drop, it's gonna be wild.
Yeah, so I, that's why I just wanna make sure we're understanding what's going on with the different staging areas and what we have to identify and not.
Cause how many homes have we built this year, so far, like roughly year to date, right? I mean, interest rates have been high this year, and in my community, we built the most homes that we have in the last six years, in the community I work in. Um, with interest rates through the roof.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, I did do a little snapshot, uh, last week for, um, development lots, available lots that have been final-platted, uh, preliminary-plated lots that are awaiting final plat approval. Um, year to date, we've processed a hundred and eighty-one new single-family, uh, home permits. Anticipated, the total of available-plated lots currently is about three hundred and five. So that's, they've gone through a final plat process, um, and.
Infrastructure's in or in the process of going in?
Exactly, yeah. Um, and then anticipated lots to be final-plated, so these are the lots that have been preliminary-plated, but not yet final-plated, is, uh, I think the count that I had was a hundred and ninety-three, so.
So we're looking at about a two-year supply. Just keep in mind, the market likes to stay about a year, year and a half in front of it.
And for our net density, it really depends on how many acres that is, right?
For, that are final-plated.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So it's not just the number of houses, it's how many, how, how many acres is being developed with those houses? Because if we only had four houses on a single acre, we would technically meet the requirement, if nothing else was being built that year. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are, and, you know, granted, we're still looking at a ten-year cycle, so we're, you know, some years we're gonna meet it, some we won't.
Like, we could say every year we're only gonna build, I know we're not, but we could say, my, my math brain is turning this into a math problem. We could technically say, every year, we're gonna build out one acre with four houses on it. We have now met our four houses per acre, and that's it.
No more houses.
No more houses, we're done this year.
And that council might not prove that comp law.
I'm, I'm understanding that, but we would be meeting the letter of their law.
Yes.
Yep. We had zero houses, we would still need it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So let's just stop building.
We got stuff to pay for.
Oh, well, then maybe we shouldn't budget on what, what something may or may not happen. We should budget on what we actually have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Do you want us to sort of meeting, we're gonna.